Oh, yeah, I believe so, yes. She knows.
What was that? That was not me.
Katie, Katie Carter.
I talked to her today and she's not very aware. She's a hurrier, so. Okay, guys.
Yes.
Got it, let's do it.
Uh, meeting number twenty-two is now called to order. This is November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. It is five thirty P M. We are in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCambeau.
Here.
Rinker. Wilson.
Excuse me, here.
Wilson. Phillips.
Here.
All right. Um, we're gonna roll downhill tonight like a bowling ball after an ice storm down Division Street. Thanks for asking. Okay, uh, first we have a proclamation for Giving Tuesday. Counselor.
Yes, sir. Your honor, I have a proclamation for Giving Tuesday. And the pro- proclamation reads, whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, thank you, where- wherever people give and whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Burlington, and whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Burlington, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Signed and sealed this nineteenth day of November twenty eighteen, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor.
Val. Jim Matino.
Oh, I got one.
Would like to give you. Shane, I'll get a picture. Val. Jim Matino. Ready?
I'm ready, you're ready?
Act like you actually wanna stand by me, all right?
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Would you please have a word, Val?
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
I have no prepared comments, so I, uh, sent Shane an email suggesting that we do this as a city, and then now here I am. So, I did highlight some things very quickly, but I just wanna first say thank you for recognizing Giving Tuesday and letting me come and speak to all of you, and thank you for all of the time that you all put into, to help the city of Burlington. And I recognize that new council member right there. All right, um, so Giving Tuesday started a few years back in New York, and it was an opportunity for communities and people to get together and try to champion a day of giving after a couple big days of, of buying and trying to get into, trying to launch the, uh, the opening day of giving season and around the holidays and Christmas, and to recognize what Christmas is all about. So, I guess I'm now the unofficial ambassador for Giving Tuesday for Burlington, and I'm grateful for that, and I will accept that honor with pleasure. Um, everyone has something to give. You can give your time, expertise, monetary donations, large or small, and simple acts of kindness, food, clothing, all of these things are gifts. Um, Giving Tuesday is a global day of giving that harnesses the collective power of individuals, communities, and organizations to encourage philanthropy and to celebrate generosity worldwide. Um, it was established, like I said, by this gentleman in New York to harness the collective power of a unique blend of partners to transform how people talk about, participate in the giving season, inspire people to take collective action, to improve their communities, what I feel you all are doing, give back in better, smarter ways to charities and causes they believe in, and to help create a better world. Greater giving demonstrates how the, every act of generosity counts and that they mean even more when they are given together. So, uh, when I look around this room, Dana, there's, everybody in this room has causes that are near and dear to their heart, and, uh, that is what this day is about. So, thank you for letting us recognize it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Val, thank you for coming down.
And thanks for heading that up.
All right, we have two tenure awards tonight.
I'm excited to offer this certi- certificate of recognition for thirty years of service to the city of Burlington, and the thirty years started on a wonderful day, my birthday, October seventeenth. So, put your hands together for Lois Blythe, thirty years of recognition.
Got the picture. Thank you. Bring it in. God bless you, honey. Uh, you guys getting in on this?
Oh, I've.
Counselor, come on, new counselor. Get in on this.
I can still do the selfie right there.
Yeah. Where's little Counselor? You can stand up, you're short. Great, congratulations. Would you please have a word?
Shoes are untied. Shoes are tucked and tied.
Tied those shoes, mayor.
It has been a pleasure and a blessing to, um, serve the community of Burlington. When I came here in nineteen eighty-eight with my two small children, I was embraced by this community, and, uh, I have never regretted moving here. And so, I, I'm kind of beyond, I can't believe it's been thirty years for, I was just a baby when I came here. But I had met my future husband here, and we had another child together, and so, uh, and I've been involved in as many things as I can because, as my father always said, that you should always give back to the community that you live in because they give you so much. So, thank you.
Very well said.
Thank you.
Those are the type of employees we've got down here. God bless you, honey.
I'm just a babe.
She's just a babe. All right. Um, we have one more, uh, certificate of recognition, and, uh, I'm glad to be giving this one out tonight. Uh, this one is to the mountain man, and he's got forty years of service, and this means a lot to me because he started on my birthday. No, he didn't, I just wanted to say that. But, uh, forty years is a long time, and, uh, you'd never guess it, this guy's not tired yet, and, uh, I'm glad to be giving this to you tonight, my friend. Certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of forty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington. As of November seventh, two thousand eighteen, we hereby present Brayden the Mountain Man Hill with this certificate of recognition. Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor, come on down. Tenure award. See, you brought the good-looking one, but, yeah.
What's up, Val?
Man, we appreciate you, man, ma'am. Um, everybody's gonna wanna get in some of this action, so, everybody, little counselor.
Thank you.
Have a word, my friend.
Thank you.
I do not bring that, ma'am. Shane is not good enough.
I also don't have anything prepared. Just, uh, to let you know, though, that I am very proud to have been an employee, to be an employee for forty years. I do believe that pride is something that is important for the city of Burlington and its employees, uh, all across the board. And just to close, you'll be happy to know that this will be the only forty-year award that I'll be receiving from the city. I, once again, thank you very much for treating me as well as you have for forty years. Thank you.
All right, let's just to kick the excitement going. Um, we have, uh, another award tonight. Um, this first one is to, and I don't have her, I don't have her, I was supposed to have her, uh, essay that she wrote? I don't have it, but every year they have an essay, and it's, uh, if I was the mayor for the day, for a day, what would I do? And, uh, I'll tell you what, there was one that really stood out this year, it was phenomenal, and obviously, um, it's this little joker that's sitting right next to me that won it. And I just wanna tell you that I thought it was phenomenal, it was excellently written, and, uh, I plagiarized a few things from you, so I'm looking forward to using your lines and make a mayor's speech. Appreciate it. Glad to have you down with us tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You are an example to your classmates and your peers in the entire state of Iowa. Your If I Were Mayor essay was well thought out, and I'm going to steal a few ideas. Thank you for making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to Jenna Knudsen. And can I give you an interesting point? Yeah, yeah, definitely, so, uh, let's all get some of this action. Mayor, you gonna let me keep my job for the rest of the night, right?
Yes, I.
All right. That's all good? There you go. Would you get in on that? Mayor, would you please have a word? Thank you and whatnot, and all that for show. Thank you, Mayor. No workout. No pressure, Mayor, no pressure.
Uh, I don't know. Thank you for letting me participate in this, and... Just read this back here. Just read that. City of Burlington, a great place to live, work, and play. There you go.
Sound like a true mayor to me. All right, well done. Uh, this next one, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm tickled that we get to give these out, and, um, every once in a while, somebody just stands out that, uh, that I have never even had the opportunity to met, to meet, and this is one lady that I'm, I'm meeting, I believe for the first time, and you look familiar, like I've seen you somewhere before, but I've heard so much about you, I feel like I already know you, and it's interesting that we, it would even be, uh, Giving Day that we, uh, declared because, that's why you're down here, because you gave freely without expecting anything back in return. Uh, they call that agape love, when you give something to somebody, and you love on somebody with no expectation of anything in return. Um, that's admirable, and we need more people like you in Burlington, so I hope you don't leave. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model transplant Burlingtonian. Your sweet and kind heart is what the world needs more of, and what we can proudly say we have right here in the city of Burlington. You're amazing. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to Michelle Lecander, would you please? You gotta get a picture, Kate.
Yeah, I got.
Somebody's gotta think I'm cool. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm getting my culture. You good? Give me a hug, buddy. Come on, bring it in. Would you please have a word?
There's always so much to give.
Yeah, you got that right.
I'd like to thank you all for this presentation and award. Um, I don't know that this is really deserving because it was just the right thing to do for her, so, but I, I do do a lot of volunteering with Head of Gilbert and things in the communities, so, and I realize how important that is for Burlington, so, and I'm honored to have this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor.
Do you wanna do this one since it's the first, or do you want me to do it?
No, go ahead, man, break eyes. Thanks for coming down, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor, I have an award this evening. Uh, you're exemplifying ser- outstanding service. You have gone above and beyond the call of duty on many occasions, and for this, we recognize you. You are admirable and courageous in the city council and the city of Burlington, and I personally want to thank you. This is an extraordinary, extraordinary people do extraordinary things, and you are extra- extraordinary. On November fifth, two thousand eighteen, this mayor's first extraordinary service award is presented to Ryan Gorley.
The very first. All right, come on down, Counselor, come on. That's right. You set a new standard, my friend.
First person.
This is not it. Dude, you're right, sorry, man, we're blessed to have you, bro. You got him, just upset, you got him. You guys getting in on that?
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
Dude, this is a first, he's extraordinary.
Thanks.
There you go.
Sir. Not my favorite thing in the world, but... So, Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I had a, thought about putting a ten-minute speech together, but that's just not me.
We love you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanna say thank you, thank the residents of Burlington, and thank my fellow employees, um, for the opportunity to have this job. I just love this job, so, just a great thing. And, uh, just thank you very much. I thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Yep, it shows in your work, sir. Good job.
And that's why he was receiving it. That's why he was receiving that award. It was, uh, extraordinary service, and, uh, that, that needs to be recognized. We definitely appreciate that. Okay, uh, next, yes, all of you that wanna get on outta here, please do. Stick around for the rest of this stuff.
No worries.
Thanks for coming. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes reports and bonds. We have ten resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution authorizing internal loan from general fund to tax increment revenue fund. The third is a resolution approving annual financial report. The fourth is a resolution approving annual urban renewal report. The fifth is a resolution obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership, TIF rebate subfund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The sixth is a resolution obligating funds from the Wine Guard TIF rebate subfund of the city's urban renewal tax... of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The seventh is a resolution obligating funds from the Burlington Crossing TIF rebate subfund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The eighth is a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure for Park West subdivision. The ninth is a resolution approving resignation and release agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Alex Place as a Burlington Fire Department firefighter. The tenth is a resolution approving sub-license agreement between the city of Burlington, Zico Systems, Inc., and Huckleberry Hotel, LLC for use by the Renewal Energy Committee read only, read only access to the plug-in electric vehicle charging station data derived from Huckleberry's use of the licensed software at their location in Burlington, Iowa. And we have two hearings up for December third. Now, the first is consideration of an application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for the micro entre... micro enterprise, that was a good one. Micro Enterprise Assistance Pilot Program. Then the second is a consideration of lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Most LLC for use of Dankworth Park pool. So, anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed?
Good evening, Chris Repke, twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison Avenue. I just have questions on number three and number ten. That's the only reason to ask for, be removed, just a couple of questions.
Actually, number four, if you're after, wanting to talk about TIF, I might have given, not told you which title.
Okay.
That's the annual urban renewal report, is number four.
Okay, so.
Four and number ten.
Ten.
Three, four, ten. Just have a couple of questions on those.
Three, four, and ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I get a motion.
Your honor, I got a motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda with the exception of under resolutions three, four, and ten.
Second.
Moved to second, Kathleen.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now it's time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as one thousand six Elm Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. We're gonna sell the property, and it's gonna make somebody a lovely home. Mr. Tisland?
This is a property we acquired through the abandoned building program, again, at one thousand six Elm, located between Tenth and Central and north of Elm. Uh, it is on a very small lot, um, a single-family home, um, built in eighteen fifty-eight. One-story home, two-bedroom, one bath, fifty-five, or fifty-three by forty-foot lot, uh, one-story, uh, does need the general, uh, maintenance and upkeep, uh, that most of our homes that we acquire, uh, in this condition. Uh, junk and items need to be cleaned out. Plumbing and electrical upgrades are required by licensed, uh, plumbers, electricians, HVAC upgraded, um, porches repaired, siding, uh, interior, uh, repairs as well. Purchaser must ensure the property receives permits and meets codes for renovation, uh, or demolition. Uh, for renovated, again, licensed electrician and plumber shall be required to inspect and sign off that such items in the property meet or are brought up to codes. Uh, occupancy of the structure is, uh, not allowed until those items are, uh, brought up to code, um, that it is substantially, uh, meets our housing code and those items are inspected. Uh, purchaser shall pay a minimum of five hundred or ten percent down, whichever is greater upon approval, uh, with the entire amount within thirty days. Improvement shall be started within sixty days and completed within a hundred and eighty days of approval of sale, uh, which may be extended an additional hundred and eighty days if, uh, progress is being, is, uh, being made, um, with quick claim deed, uh, transferred upon substantial completion of renovation of the home. So, again, uh, you know, the purchaser does have to do quite a bit of work before we, uh, transfer deed and before anyone can occupy the structure, so, uh, currently, we have two, uh, bids, uh, five hundred dollars, uh, from Patrick Smith and seven hundred dollars from Esteban Gonzalez.
Okay, uh, we're gonna start this, uh, auction out. If there's anybody else that wants to bid on this house that has not, that's name is not Patrick or Esteban, then we're gonna ask you to come, uh, to the, what is that? Lectern?
Lectern.
Whatever. Have you come to the, uh, lectern and give us your name and address and put in your bid, and then you can just, you can finish it off just by raising your hand, we'll, we'll get down to it, so. Okay. We've got, uh, high bid of, uh, seven hundred dollars, um, from Esteban Gonzalez. Do I have a, do I have a bid of eight hundred? I've got a bid of seven hundred, do I have a bid of eight? All right. It's a tough crowd tonight. Man, I thought we were really gonna make some money on this. You guys are killing me over here. We have a bid of seven hundred, going once? A bid of seven hundred, going twice? Sold for seven hundred dollars to Esteban Gonzalez. Always loved that name, man. Esteban, all right, uh...
Got a motion, your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye. Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as one thousand six Elm Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Second. Now, I do the, okay, sorry, I like to always get screwed up on this. Your honor, I have a, uh, motion to amend the resolution for the sale of property, uh, stating that we sell the property to Esteban Gonzalez for seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved to second. Uh, let's vote, Kathleen, um...
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Uh, let's vote now, as amended.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Sold. Let me give you one of these, my friend. Tell you what, I may need a place in the city, Esteban. Uh, for those that are still interested, we're still gonna have plenty of properties to sell, so, uh, don't give up. All right. What do we have next, guys? Number two, next is a consideration of an ordinance, amendment to ordinance number thirty-two, twenty. An ordinance creating the Sunrise West Planned Unit Development, P U D overlay district by making changes to section four land use requirements.
This is a amendment to the existing P U D for the Sunrise Development that includes the properties on Messiah, Hiller, uh, and north up to Gilbert there. Um, they're looking to continue development, uh, off of, uh, Cambridge Drive, um, but looking to do it a little bit differently with having the structures on individual lots versus currently all the structures are on a common lot. Um, part of that's due to, uh, taxes, how they're taxed, uh, with multiple structures on one lot, uh, could be taxed as commercial for anything new, um, versus, uh, having one duplex on, uh, one lot, uh, would retain the residential taxes for the property. So, the amendments are primarily to, uh, spell out what the setbacks, uh, and, uh, lot areas would be for these, uh, new lots. Looking at, uh, five lots there off of, uh, um, Cambridge Drive just to the west of the existing homes that are on Messiah Drive. This really won't look any different as it's developed from what's out there now, but they will be on their own individual lots. Uh, so the changes are in section four, two A. Um, this one being just for the whole area, that the entire is, uh, considered R two, single-family transitional, um, that allows for single-family, uh, two-family, uh, dwellings in this area, uh, but then lots one through five of the fifth addition, which is shown on the map here, uh, shall require a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback except that fifteen-foot wide porch addition, uh, for each unit shall be allowed to project, uh, fourteen feet into the required rear setback area. Uh, many of the structures, um, have, uh, porches or pads that allow for porches off the back of the structures, and that, uh, would allow for that. And then, uh, the second change in number B is, uh, lots within the fifth addition to Sunrise West subdivision shall be allowed to be no less than ninety-eight feet in width. Uh, these are, uh, slightly narrower than our typical or minimum lot size of a hundred, so we put that in the P U D as well. This is, uh, approved, we're anticipating the preliminary plat forward for consideration of approval as well, uh, at the upcoming meeting.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No questions or concerns here?
Let's do it.
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, amendment to ordinance number three, two, two, zero. An ordinance creating the Sunrise, Sunrise West Planned Unit Development, P U D overlay district by making changes to section four land use requirements.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay. Number three is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one sixty-one Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
We do a regular annual review of our, uh, housing code and other, uh, codes to see how they, um, coordinate and comply, uh, with how, uh, things are developing, making sure that they're, uh, up to date. Upon review of our housing code, we have a few, uh, recommended amendments, uh, being brought forward. Um, within these, uh, one is a definition of a replacement window. Uh, currently, we do not have, uh, what that means exactly. Um, so defining a replacement window is a window that is installed in existing win- So defining a replacement window is a window that is installed in the existing window opening without the need of altering or reducing the size of the original window opening. So this would reflect or apply primarily to, under the housing code, chapter 16107 minimum structure standards and nine exits. Under that, it talks about egress windows for, where those are required. And the total opening dimension may be achieved with installation of a replacement double-hung window or windows with easily removable sashes. So kind of defining what that replacement window would be within the code. And then under, again, exits and egress windows under C, taking out the minimum clear opening of four square feet at grade and five square feet elsewhere as provided. We've made some changes previously to our code to allow windows that have easily removable sashes that do not require the use of a tool or key to count both that entire opening, but we still want to have that minimum height and width dimension and making sure we're not putting in windows that are smaller just because you have the ability to. We want to make sure we're having the greatest dimension possible as well as meeting our minimum code requirements for size openings. Four square feet for an opening, two by two is a very small opening and want to try and avoid that where possible. We realize there's some areas that we try and work with the existing structure, but don't want to encourage just putting in small windows because it's allowed there. Number 13, electrical requirements. Adding GFCI protected outlets shall be provided in kitchens, bathrooms, or any room where an outlet is within six feet of water access. That's just updating this code to reflect the existing electrical code, making sure that's compliant and clear within the housing code. Twenty-five, shades, draperies, and window coverings, eliminating a need for non-rooming units or non-furnished dwelling units to have to provide hardware necessary to support shades, draperies, or other devices. A lot of times people are putting in just the minimum and it's not really useful for the actual tenant because they bring in something different and it's not really serving the function. It's just something that's put in and maybe ripped out or taken out after we do our inspection or we don't want to have unnecessary requirements that don't really get used. And then the third, last one, responsibility of owners related to the maintenance and occupancy of the premise for maintenance of gas appliances and facilities. Currently, it says every gas appliance shall be connected with, to a gas line with rigid black iron piping and then adding that, or any other gas pipe allowed by city codes. We've flexed our existing city code to allow additional piping materials and we want to reflect that in our housing codes that we're not more strict with our housing codes and other sections of city code.
Tightening it up, friends. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
The only question I had is, somebody had asked me if somebody has a window opening and they can get a stock window, window that is smaller, slightly smaller, not, not to the degree that we've talked about, but are they allowed to put that in and then close in or reframe that window opening?
Maybe Larry could talk a little bit more on, our chief code inspector Larry Caston could maybe talk a little bit more about the intent of it.
Their concern was the cost difference between a stock window and a special order window.
I'll see.
The, the short answer, no. What we did with the egress window regulations is, an egress, an actual egress window is one sash open. You take the square footage of that section. First floor by building code has to be five square feet. Second floor and basement is 5.7 square feet. We relaxed that to the point we will allow a double-hung window be put into that opening and we'll use both sections. We had to define replacement window as not altering the size of that window because stock windows, and I understand what you're saying, a stock window would cost you less. It's close, but we had people shrinking the opening down and putting in a very small window and using both sashes, opening those up and saying, see, I made the amount of space that I needed. So what we intended to do with this was put in a definition for replacement window and that's what we want to stick with. That was the original sized window. If you can make egress with a stock window, actual egress, which means one sash open, then it's fine. But if we're gonna use both sashes, we want a replacement window that's actually our definition of a replacement.
Okay.
So when in doubt, check with the code department.
Questions or concerns? Counsel, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Kathleen?
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, resolutions?
Your honor, I have a resolution awarding a contract for the 2018 West Burlington and Agency Intersection Traffic Signal Detection.
Second.
Jesse How, City Engineer. Basically, what this resolution in front of you guys is for is the traffic signal detection cameras at the intersection of Agency and West Burlington Avenue. These don't monitor people in any way other than look at how many cars are at each leg of an intersection and moving traffic through more efficiently. So this will allow us to coordinate the intersections of West Burlington Avenue, Plaza West, and Roosevelt, so we can move traffic through that area more efficiently.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel, do you guys have questions?
Answered my questions in work session.
All right. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Get her done.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the five-year road plan for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Jesse, just stay there. Oh.
I did prepare a little bit more for you guys this evening. I'll just whip through a few quick slides here, kind of explaining more of the five-year road plan and how we put it together. So as we discussed in the work session, every two years, our staff reevaluates the road plan. It's largely based upon information we get from the Iowa Pavement Management Institute. They take this vehicle here and scan every road in town and they look at the rideability, cracks, structural deficiencies of the road, and then they boil that all down into a number that's a pavement condition index, which is a PCI number. And every road gets assigned a number from one to 100 based on the quality of the road. And primarily, we're looking at the more distressed roads in our network. We also gather citizen feedback throughout the year when people call about poor road conditions, we look at that. And, you know, we also look heavily at the average traffic totals of each road and how, how often they're used to make our final decision on, on which roads make the road plan. So the next slide. This is the condition summary that I was referencing before that we get from our drive data. It gives a summary of all the different roads. The red ones are, are the lowest. There's a few of them on there and we'll get into that more on the next slide. This is a graph, I think Mr. Rinker had requested maybe a distribution of where the roads were in relation to one another and their condition. So the ideal graph you want to see on this is what I have in the background there, a bell curve, and, and we fit that pretty good. In fact, we have a couple on the higher end of that, so that's really where we want it to be. Next slide. This is a quick summary of how many miles of road we have in each general surface type. So in total length of miles, this isn't lane miles, it's just strictly miles of road. We have just under 100 miles of HMA overlay, right around 50 miles of concrete surface, and then just over six miles of seal coat. We also have included the cost for repair of each of those. We adjust those yearly depending on how our costs come in on various projects, so. Next slide. This is the actual five-year road plan. I have the, might have to squint a little bit to see all the roads on there, but here's the roads that are on there. Quick summary of things that have changed. We have added a few streets to this over the previous five-year road plan, which I'll talk about on the next slide, but we'll leave it here for now. We did get a couple of additional grants. We are extending Broadway Street near the Recplex. You, you can see out on the far left-hand side of the map. We had got a RISE grant for that, that's going to cover 50% of the overall cost of that road. And then in 2021, we have Main Street from the bridge to Angular. That's 100% covered by the Tiger Grant. And then in 2022, we have Jefferson Street from Front Street to Central, which is also 100%, covered by the Tiger Grant. We did have to remove a few roads from the previous five-year road plan due to, you know how I said we adjust costs year to year? We had to adjust the asphalt costs up by, I believe, 10 cents a square foot, which doesn't sound like much, but when you're doing a lot of square foot.
And that was because Flint Hills Drive came in more and we took Parkway off, right?
Correct. So.
Was there any other streets that we removed?
I was just getting to the ones, most of them are up on North Hill that came out of the plan. North Seventh, North Sixth, North Fifth, and Oak Street came out of the plan. We, we are running a little less expensive than what our budget would indicate on the next slide, Eric. Might be a better one to look at. We are, we are 300,000 under budget currently and if we do get additional grant funding, you know, those would be the first ones in all likelihood to come back onto the plan, so. So there's a chance that they would be added back into the fold. On the next slide, I have future plans. As I stated, we're, we aggressively go after grant funds every year, the biggest one being the Surface Transportation Block Grant or STBG funds. Those typically are an 80/20 match, which help out quite a bit in getting more roads on the plan. For this year's project, we're adding in agency from where we stopped over by Hy-Vee to Curran. So you'll be seeing that grant come up for your guys' approval in the next month or so. Another thing we are kind of excited to get into is, I guess, more in-depth pavement planning. That same Iowa Pavement Management Institute, they offer us software that we've started to use that can do a lot of really neat modeling things as far as saying, okay, if we don't spend any money, here's what our road network looks like in 10 years. If we spend X amount or Y amount, or we do asphalt instead of concrete, you can put a lot of different scenarios in like that. And we've been using it a little bit, but we're not in a position to present any, anything like that right now, but it's something we're gonna get into in the next year, so. That should be another useful tool to present some things to you guys and make some big management kind of decisions off of, off of that information. So with that, that's all I had prepared. You guys have any questions for me?
Your slides are great, I appreciate it. You said citizen input has a play in what roads get done. How much input do they, is that allowed in the formula?
Well, typically, we like to prioritize the data that's coming back from the vehicle because it's more impartial as well as the traffic. But if there's a road that's really bad that needs some attention, you know, we will look at replacing that, but a lot of times, some of the ones that come in are such low volume that it doesn't make a lot of sense to replace that road until it's basically failing. So we take it and look at those when they come in and, and at that five-year road plan cycle, but a lot of times they don't make it on strictly based on input.
What's prohibiting us from using the software 100%?
Well, I've been getting into it, but I just haven't got enough of the situational stuff in right now, so I'm fairly new on using it.
Okay. Any other questions, Jesse? Any questions from the audience? Should have known Chris was coming down here to start trouble.
Yeah, trouble. 2228 Madison Avenue, and as a disclaimer, that is now 200 feet outside of the Madison Avenue project. I have moved since the summer. Actually moved in October. Still on Madison Avenue, but.
You didn't move very far, Chris.
Nine blocks, nine blocks. So, and I still own 1306 Madison Avenue, so I still own that one, for now. So again, I, I speak against one of the years, 2022, on the five-year plan, which it concludes the Madison Avenue project, which removes the on-street parking on Madison Avenue. And I, again, I still speak about that. And did you, all of you read the grant application for that?
Yeah.
Back when we, back when it was in our packet.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I thought there were some errors in that grant application too and those type of things. So I still ask you to reconsider the 2022-year plan of removing the parking on Madison Avenue. I know there's grant money enclosed with that is why you're choosing it, but I think it, it hurts the property values on Madison Avenue. I kind of seeing that right now a little bit and trying to resell, put 1306 on the market. This, the value's not kind of where we thought it would be after living here. I've owned a house since 1994, so I mean, it's not like it's not been invested. And the reason for the move wasn't because of the Madison Avenue project. 2228 came up for sale and it just, we've always thought about having ranch and just one thing led to another. So, but again, so I'm asking, you know, to reconsider the 2022 year of removing the parking on Madison Avenue. And I know, it'd be, I'll keep on bringing this up, I'll mention it till the payment's laid, so.
I appreciate your consistency.
I have a question for you, though, don't leave the podium.
Oh, yeah, no.
So you mentioned the property values went down. How can they go down if it had, if the pavement hasn't been laid yet?
Well, for example, I can give you an example too with doing some of the research. It happened this May, a house down the block sold. And it sold for, the figures aren't right in front of me. It sold for 77, I believe, in 2013 in May. It sold for 74.9. So it already has lost value without removal of the parking and that's.
Buying conditions were a lot different then.
Right, true.
If you talk to a real estate agent.
But you don't want to add more conditions, you know, too. One thing too with bike lanes, this is more of a residential neighborhood. This is not a mixed neighborhood with many bars or places where people ride bikes to go shop. Also, you got to remember, a lot of bike lanes are going to big urban areas. Urban areas, I grew up in suburb of Chicago. To go from where I live to the north side of town could take you a half hour. Here, it takes you 15 minutes or 10 minutes in Burlington. It could be in Chicago, easier in the suburb of Chicago, quicker to ride a bike. Here, by the time you get your bike out, you get going, you're, 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 you're there by driving your car. Burlington just doesn't need, you know what I mean? The biking.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. Remember, the new term is multi-purpose lane, so.
Yeah, multi-purpose.
All different people.
Also too, you, you brought up this, you know, there was a lot of things brought up on the street about safety, about side swipes and cars. Putting bike lanes in and saying kids in elementary school can ride them, I don't see how that's any safer. I think that's even more dangerous. I think that's even more dangerous for the kids. That's in the grant application about being used for driving school, school students to ride to work, so. I, I think in the long run, it hurts the property values. There's already stress in property values in Burlington. And, um, I, I guess, so I guess that helped me buy the house I bought.
Yeah, I hear you and I appreciate your fears and I, I think that you're gonna find them not to be founded because actually, when I did the research, the property values actually went up eleven percent with the multi-purpose lane, so. Crush your fingers.
But you gotta look at the.
Crush your fingers. Hopefully, you know, your fears won't be.
We're getting started. You're getting started. You're getting ramped up.
Yeah, but look at the areas, look at the areas in that, and are they residential streets? Madison Avenue is mostly a residential street with houses. It's not a mixed business type. It's a residential area more than a business area.
I still like you. We can agree to disagree.
Okay, do disagree. And then, I mean, the house I bought, the housing market did allow me to buy it.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
So.
All right.
Sorry, we weren't rolling downhill.
That's all right. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of a used two thousand twelve JCB all-terrain forklift for Public Works Department.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
In the, I'm Chris Clements, Operations Manager for Public Works. Uh, in the two thousand nineteen capital improvement budget, the Public Works allocated seventy thousand dollars for a telehandler. It was to use on the new flood wall, the aluminum inserts and stuff when we, we go down to put them up. Uh, once they were put up and we took them down and we put them back up once again, we realized the telehandler isn't exactly what we need. Uh, when we went to Downport, that's what they used. They had a little more room, a little more flatter ground than we have. Um, so we've determined that probably a better fit for our, our workplace and our work areas would be a all-terrain forklift. And we've decided to go with used because I, we don't necessarily put enough hours on it to justify it anyway. Along with that, uh, it's not part of this resolution, but we will try to bring two six-inch pumps forward in the future for approval and hopefully we're still gonna stay under the, the seventy thousand dollars allocated. Uh, but the resolution tonight is just for the, the two thousand twelve JCB all-terrain forklift.
Okay. Concerns to the audience? I see none. Counsel, you have any questions for Chris? Thank you, CC. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Number four.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand seventeen Vineyard Street area drainage project.
Second. Wait a second. Jesse?
Yeah, so, uh, the Vineyard Street Drainage Project was brought to us via citizen feedback again. We did do quite a bit of ditching there and put some storm structures in. Everything's been seeded and finished graded and we've gone through the punch list and corrected everything as needed, so we're ready to close it out.
Questions or concerns to the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
All right. Resolutions, uh, number three, resolution approving annual financial report. Mr. Ripke?
I need a second.
Second.
Were you by the producing that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Second.
I'm not sure if this is the right one or, okay.
It, I don't think it probably is. Your, your question has to do with TIF.
TIF.
So you're probably, you're probably fine with this. This is the annual report for just overall expenditures and revenue from last year.
All right.
Number four will be the, the one that you wanna have a discussion on, so.
Okay.
This question is gonna be on the next item.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's all right. Okay, so we're good on number three. We'll just go to number four.
We need a.
Uh, well, yeah, we better.
Move to approve resolution number three, approving the annual financial report.
Second.
Both of you. Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Number four. Uh, it's a resolution approving annual urban renewal report.
This has to do with the TIF expenditures for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Yeah, and all the question I had was.
I just needed someone to introduce us.
Second.
That was my introduction. I'll read it again.
Second.
Okay.
I apologize. Chris Ripke, twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison. The, the question I had is how much of TIF, how much, uh, does, does it cost a taxpayer? For example, let's just use fif-, you know, if your house is valued taxed at fifty thousand and it's a dollar, that's fifty dollars a year. It would be nice to know if there was a report, a way to figure it out, how much does TIF cost the property tax owner, property owner in taxes?
Problem with trying to come up with that number is determining whether or not a project would be done with or without the.
Okay, but I mean, it is an important thing on TIF because it does.
Yes.
It, it does cost the tax, taxpayer, taxpayers for TIF projects. I mean, for example, you know, thirteen oh six Madison, twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison pays for a new pavement in Sunrise, is a sunrise, or one of those new developments off of West Avenue that you gave tip for. So I mean, that, that does have a play. Just be interesting to know what the tax liability is on TIF for homeowners, for property owners. That's, that was my comment on that. I looked at the report and did not find that in there, so, thank you.
It's, it's, as you're mentioning, it's kinda hard to track, but one thing you can make a, do an evaluation on, uh, TIF revenue that we receive annually, and it's listed on the front page of the TIF report. Uh, the TIF revenue in fiscal year eighteen was two million four hundred and seventy-one thousand. If it wasn't being captured in the TIF area and used for TIF projects funded by TIF, those would be released to the underlying districts. For the city of Burlington proper, it would mean that there would be enough valuation to have about seven hundred fifty thousand additional property tax dollars at the same levy that we currently have. That would be available for whatever general purpose that you were wanting to do. So you could look at that and say that we have made a decision that has an impact that how, how much does, what's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars equivalent of? About a dollar tax levy? So you could say that we're, we're doing the equivalent of about a dollar tax levy to do the TIF projects that we have on the books. If we weren't using TIF at all, um, and we were doing the same, uh, other projects that we were doing that are not funded by TIF, it would mean that we could have about a dollar lower levy. However, that would also mean that you would have, uh, like the roundabout wouldn't have been done. The, uh, Agency Street improvements wouldn't have been done. If you were saying that Agency Street needed to be widened, or to, to do a project such as that, or the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, which we haven't, which will be on, is a TIF project and will be on the report in the future, the only way that you could do those projects would either be to, uh, push out the annual overlay projects that we do. Well, that'd be the most likely alternative. And it, it's just sort of a, these, these are some of those decisions that you have to make as a group to figure out what's the appropriate use of our, of, 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 uh, property taxes in the community. How do we make sure that we keep our infrastructure improved? How do we make sure that we grow the community on, as a whole, long-term? But, so the point that you're getting at is you could, you could not do any TIF and your property tax askings would be a dollar lower, but none of the projects would have occurred that were done with TIF. You have to think through what's the pros and cons of that. Now, that's, that's your decision as a group to make.
But I think it's also difficult, like I said, to answer it because we don't know what part of those projects wouldn't have been completed without it. And the other thing I just wanna make clear is, so if we TIF a project, we don't take tax revenue from another property that a person pays and apply it to that project. The money that the property owner pays from the increment on the TIF project goes back to the developer for that project. So we don't, we don't take, if you, if you pay your taxes, we don't take your taxes and give it to a developer. It's only through the increment that the developer creates that they get reimbursed through the TIF.
Yeah, I think in the long run, there is a transfer. I think.
I do have you, do have you come to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it sounds, it sounds like, I think TIF is one of those magical things. That's kinda hard to understand. But it almost sounds, I mean, if you do, you know, if you said, you know, lower a levy a dollar in general, it does, that's on everybody. That's, it's not on the TIF people, that's on everybody. And, and, you know, I, I understand the infrastructure projects, but sometimes it'd be better just to be forward with it and say, hey, this is what we gotta have for taxes to pay for these projects rather than trying to hide it in TIF. The more you hide things, the more you kinda get in trouble. You know what I mean? It's, it's.
I know what you mean. I just don't when you say hide.
I know, I, I know. It's, I like, you know, things, it's.
We have hearings for everything that we.
Hiding sounds sneaky and we're not trying to be sneaky about it.
But I understand where you're coming from.
But see.
It's a difficult formula.
Right, and it's, see, not necessarily, you have to be, it's not saying the council's being sneaky. It's kinda, people set things up that don't. You know, you didn't set up TIF, somebody else set up TIF.
No, but I understand, I understand what you're saying. It's just whether to be hardline, know where it's coming from.
Right, it, it's better to have that, you know, rather than where is it coming from? And then it's, it, that way taxpayers can have a more type of thing. Because I, as I can say, buying twenty-two, twenty-eight, my taxes have really changed.
We appreciate you, sir. Any other questions from the audience? Counsel, are we satisfied?
Yes. Good.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Number ten is a resolution approving sub-license agreement between the city of Burlington, Zecos Systems, Inc. and Huckleberry Hotel, LLC for the use of the Renewable Energy Committee read only access to the PUG and electric vehicle charging station data derived from Huckleberry's use of the licensed software at their location in Burlington, Iowa. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Ripke?
Real quick question. I, I read everything. I've been, I've been reading everything. Twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison Avenue, sorry. It said we follow in their California law, not Iowa law. Iowa's scratched out and California was put in. My question is, why California law? I don't live in California.
It's, it's the company that, that, uh, we're asking for their data. They are located in California and they want it to be by theirs. We don't, they don't, they don't need to give us this data. This is, the whole, the sole purpose of this agreement is, you know, the Renewable Energy Commission had a couple of, a couple of years back, had applied to Alliant Energy for funding to put in some electric charger stations. They did the match for the ones that are down at the city parking lot just, uh, east of here. Hy-Vee did the, I think it was Hy-Vee that did the match on the ones that are located out, Hy-Vee, and then Huckleberry did the match on, um, the one located out there at the, uh, doggone it, Fun City.
Fun City, yeah.
With that, uh, we don't have any money in, in the deal that is in the, the charging station out at Fun City, but we are the pass-through on the Alliant, um, funding for it. Uh, our Renewable Energy Commit, Committee wanted to get the data off of the, the software from those charging stations. They're not a party to the agreement, but, uh, the, the company is willing to share that data and it's through this agreement that they're willing to do it. It, would it be preferable, and even our city attorney said it would be preferable that it was Iowa for where, uh, the notice was done? But in the long and short, all we're asking to do is to read the data and they don't need to let us do it. And if we make it too much of a hassle, they're just not gonna allow it. And so our, our odds of having an issue, I mean, there, there is the potential to have an issue, but really what, if there was a violation of the agreement, all we're losing is the ability to read data.
So there's no, there's no coming back on California law with financial penalties or anything?
No.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering, 'cause I saw California law, it's like, that's different.
We need to pay attention to detail, my friend. Anybody else from the audience with questions or concerns? Counsel?
Are you ending the meeting?
No.
No, no, just, just on this one.
Okay, Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, now we're ending the meeting, my friend. This is time where we will, uh, entertain comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience?
Uh, my name is Dean Finesse. I'm a rentor. I'm, I live in Northern Drive. Uh, basically about a couple of things. Uh, TIF, uh, I think we've been looking more closely to it because I, I hope I get the factory name right. Siemens was built five or ten years out there on the business, this, business park, and now they're closing up. And I want, is it really worth doing that? Like you want company, come to your city if they're gonna be here for five or ten years? Because I know the world has changed. That used to be companies come in here, they're willing to pay taxes and infrastructure to do that. And it's, they stay here for twenty to fifty to sixty years. But I think we spend this money like TIF going like this, and I think we gotta be more careful to think, are they really gonna be here for a long, long, long time? And I just think it'd be best like, but I, I do agree for infrastructure, but for housing, other things, I, I don't think they should pay, they have to pay taxes and the factories. Uh, number two is that I think you, the people in the city did a good job on the streets. I, what they did on, uh, I can name them all. Roosevelt Agency where Hy-Vee is, going to Walmart, that area, uh, going past just stop, uh, that's what we can describe them, but you're, the people in, in the work that does the streets, they, they deserve our applause. They did a great job. Thank goodness all the barriers are down. Uh, I hope real soon you put lights up at Hy-Vee and get the little patch of sidewalk done. And, uh, that's, I just think that they did a great job and you all do a great job here. Uh, I wanna wish all of you, oh, yes, uh, tainment building. Uh, I think it'd be a good idea just to get rid of all that, excuse the language, junk and just tear it down and maybe put a nice, I don't live down here, but a nice decent store where people can go in like a little tiny grocery store down there because you've been apartments down there now. In the future, you have the, you're gonna have to do something about parking, parking down there. I mean, I see those two ramps down there and I could be wrong, but I see most time they're empty. I mean, they're empty. And, uh, but I think that'd be a good thing for, in the future. And one more thing, uh.
Cascade Bridge.
Cascade Bridge, yes. Uh, I think we should have a telethon and ask people to give money to it. I can give maybe five, uh, ten dollars. That's it.
I don't think you say five or ten million. Rats.
I can't, I, I don't have that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wine guard.
If you can get, if you can get David to do it, then.
I, yeah, we placed, uh, somebody else at KBR placed to do that. Maybe get a can, a city hall for that, seeing Cascade Bridge or a bank account. But I still think it would be not, I know you don't have the money to spend on it. I know it's expensive, but I think it would be nice to have a bridge that goes in that park, 'cause that park is a beautiful park and it would be nice to able to go in there. And, and it's just a nice park, but one more thing, I wanna wish all of you, uh, all of you and the audience, happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, don't get too wild. Uh, happy gabo gabo and may the Lord Jesus Christ give you wisdom and guidance in all your decisions, whatever you do. And we should be thankful because we had, we were able to vote. And most countries weren't, people not able to do that. So peace be with you all.
Always a pleasure, my friend.
Happy Thanksgiving to you as well.
Yes.
And I'm gonna tell you, somebody said that to me the other day. They said, what about Cascade Bridge? I said, I don't got it, but I can put something down on it. You know, I think if we all did, maybe we'd have something. Chris?
I did, sorry. I've been reading, ever since last December, I read all the, all the meeting, agenda meeting, what's coming up, so. And I saw that up for council discussion at the work session was. And I saw that up for council discussion at the work session was the land swap with Burlington Northern Railroad and downtown and the old Dresser Rand site or brewery site. On the surface, I have no issue with that. I think that might be good if it works out for the city. The one thing that caught my attention in, in that report was the five hundred thousand dollars for parking lot with, uh, with the swap. If you do that, that's in a short time, a million dollars for parking lot. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars to the new Rexplex bubble, another five hundred thousand to this, you're talking a million dollars in parking lot. The, the, the older neighborhoods need that million dollars rather than the Rexplex bubble and the parking downtown. So, when you come to that discussion more, please consider that. I think on the surface, the swap looks good. You might just have to wait with that land, spend some money if you have to just fix it up so it looks decent. But in the long run, you know, five hundred thousand for parking, I think there's, city neighborhoods need that more than parking lots downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Anybody else from the audience? You guys have been fantastic tonight. What a great group. Mr. Tezdale, I'm sorry, Mr. Tezlin.
Just, uh, a brief update on the Tama building. Uh, we did receive, uh, notice from Doug Wells this afternoon that they have decided to remove the building, uh, so they're going to demolish the existing building there. I did speak with him as well. He has a meeting with, uh, Iowa Economic Development Authority in Des Moines next week to go over plans and ideas, the timing for redevelopment option and, uh, use of funds. Uh, they still have a large grant through IEDA, so, uh, trying to work with them. Um, he will be at the December tenth council work session to give an update. Uh, he is coordinating with some downtown businesses and owners to discuss preliminary design ideas. He's had some conversations with some of them and going to be reaching out to those that have contacted him in the past, some of those that have been here at council meetings to, uh, be involved in this process. And he hoped to have that, uh, meeting prior to the update to the council on the tenth of December, so maybe he can update where he's at on that there.
Yeah, I will say, Eric, I had a couple of those business people reached out to me before the meeting and said that he had indeed contacted them. They were very pleased that he was communicating, so.
As far as demolition, he does, as he mentioned at his last update, does have demolition contractor lined up, G and B Construction. Uh, he still has a piece of equipment down there. Uh, he's waiting on approval of the formal contract to proceed. Uh, he has Davis Bacon Wages that apply to this and so it can't just hire someone. He has to go through the process of making sure he meets all the requirements for wages and contracts that need to be submitted with that grant that he previously had. Um, so, it is the priority project for that contractor. Uh, as I said, does have equipment on site and will, uh, move to that site as soon as the contract's finalized. And would begin as soon, uh, as that is approved. Uh, would expect, uh, within, uh, three to five days after he starts that he will have that main building down and could pull the fence back. Uh, um, uh, so, December nineteenth is still the latest date for moving the fence in, um, but, uh, could expect that sooner if they're able to get everything organized and, uh, coordinated.
Two weeks, right? Two weeks from the time they start, that's what he said last week. Take two weeks out of the building down, it appeared. Yeah, approximately.
Yeah, he thought within three to five days after getting onsite, he could have the ex, just the structure down and fence moved a little bit, so. But again, he'll be here December tenth to give a formal update.
Okay, good, great.
Is that it? Is your razor on strike?
Yep.
Okay, the rest of the month. Kathleen, anything for the birthday girl?
No, I think.
Well, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
She's twenty-eight, so, we're really proud of her.
Peanut butter.
Happy birthday. Have a blessed Thanksgiving, everybody, and make sure you eat, uh, a lot of your favorites. My mother-in-law makes the awesome sweet potato casserole, so I will be inhaling that. Yes, yes. And if you want to burn off some calories before the, the big feast, there is a run, a little three miler walk run at, in town at the BGC, and I'll get you a turkey. You win a turkey if you can beat Jim, because he's pretty fast.
I'm not going to be there. It's, it's, that's a brutal.
Well, then, then I won't lose the bet.
Jim's out of order, okay. Counselor?
I can't lose the bet then.
Uh, the only thing, I said at the work session, and I know everybody feels the same way, if you're going to shop, please shop here. Shop local, big and small. Uh, we need the sales tax dollars, obviously, and, and the employees of those companies would sure appreciate your patronage.
That's right. They're your friends and neighbors. You forgot to mention the, the gig you went to.
Oh, this was really incredible. Last Saturday night, Friends of the Depot hosted a nineteen forties themed party, and it really showcased all their hard work that they done, the beautiful new curtains. They had a lady singing reminiscent of nineteen forties. People dressed up, there were appetizers. One lady had a, um, a little maid costume on, was serving app. It was really something to see. So, if you haven't seen the depot, we've got Christmas trees set up there. It's really beautiful. Go check it out. You can get some pictures taken, bring your family down there, get some family pictures. It's really nice. Something that Burlington can really be proud of.
All right. Counselor?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Um, the, uh, want to give a shout out to Gary Richards. Want to thank him for the invite, uh, this weekend out the Capitol. They had a, uh, rock and roll show for the veterans, and I got to meet some people from the Iowa Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. Uh, Gary is actually, and I'm going to have him come down here, he's actually one of the newest inductees from Burlington into the Rock and Roll, uh, Iowa Rock and Roll Hall of Fame up in, uh, Okoboji. So, uh, just a lot of, a lot of talented people in this area, so, uh, again, Gary, thanks for letting me come down and be a part of that. Also, uh, I can't read my own writing. Oh, yeah, the, uh, chief, you want to come up real quick and, uh, give us a, let us know how that went, how that worked out at, at Dunn Brothers or not? Okay, he's looking at me like I'm nuts. Yeah, I was talking, yeah, I was talking to the other chief. There's two chiefs back there. Yeah, but they had the, uh, yeah, would you come up? They had at Dunn Brothers this weekend, and this was the first one that they did, and, uh, I got a chance to check out some of it. I thought it was pretty cool.
So, you're looking at one person that was not there, so you might know more than I do. We actually did our Thanksgiving on Saturday, so I was out of town, but I've heard from the people that were there, there was a big success. The firefighters really enjoyed being there. Uh, got a lot of smoke detector sign-ups while they were there, so.
There's a young kid there, he had a, the visor had slid down. I've got a picture taken with him, but he's, uh, he's going to need a job. He's had a T-shirt even that said, uh, "Future firefighter," so I don't know what his name is. I can't remember. I'm going to find out. He'll be applying here sometime soon, so.
Can you tell people the number they need to call if they don't have working smoke detectors in their home?
Sure, seven, five, three, eight, three, nine, zero.
Good, thank you, because I learned that November through March, February is the highest prime time for home fires. I didn't know that. And cooking, and we do lots of cooking and, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Counselor?
Uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, this, I will not be here next week. We're shooting across the pond again for a week to, uh, for a wedding. Um, and then I just wanted to remind everybody, I know we've had one light snow and one kind of one or two inch snow, but, um, cars on snow routes need to be removed, cars and trailers, um, that way city employees could do their jobs, get the streets cleared off. So, I noticed that, uh, the other day, there were still quite a few of them out there. Um, aside of that, that's it.
James? That's enough. You're out of order, Jim.
How much snow is it before the snow route kicks in? Two inches. So, I don't even know that it would have kicked in this last weekend.
No.
So, yeah. Rhonda, would you like to come up?
I give you my word.
Thank you. The, um, Community Thanksgiving Dinner is coming up, so I wanted to say a word about that, um, or two. And actually, Lois Blythe, when she was here earlier, mentioned serving in the community. She has been on that committee since the beginning and, uh, I probably should have given her a nudge to, to talk about that in hers. Um, I did look, they have a Facebook page and so you can follow on there and see what they need. Um, they just, this afternoon, posted that they only have eighty of the two hundred turkeys that they need, um, and tomorrow is the last day to donate turkeys. You can do that by going to the Hy-Vee on agency. They also take monetary donations, which you can send to, um, Community Action or make the checkout to Community Action, drop it off at the library and Lois will make sure they get it. Um, so, they have, they have some needs like that. They also are needing volunteers, and, uh, Lois mentioned this afternoon that on Wednesday, they have to take the meat off of all of the turkeys in the afternoon. They need some more helpers for that. Um, if anyone wants to volunteer for it, they can call the library or go to our website, and there's a link there. You can go on and, and volunteer for a lot. There's other opportunities as well if you don't want to tear apart turkeys. Um, and then you also can obviously come to the events. Eleven thirty on Thanksgiving is when it starts, eleven thirty to two, but they offer other options as well. You can call and get transportation provided to the event. You can stop in and pick up a to-go meal. Um, you can call and ask them to deliver a meal to you. So, there's a lot of different options, and, um, they serve a lot of people in the community on Thanksgiving. It's a great way to get together. If you, if you don't have family to get together with, you can come and eat with others in the community. Or if you just need that meal, they can help provide you with that too, so. Anyone has any questions, just give us a call at the library and be happy to, to answer any of those, so.
Okay. We're a little bit short, so just want to send this out there, a challenge. We need a hundred and twenty-plus turkeys by tomorrow, and I'll be buying one. I only need about a hundred and nineteen other people to buy one with me and problem solved, so.
Thank you.
James?
Just to let you know, Green Bay Levy District, they, uh, are doing some improvements to their levy. And they've, they've submitted all that through the core along with the studies on the potential impact. The core is okay with what they're doing, but there is a public comment period out there, uh, through, uh, November thirtieth. Looking at what the potential impact is on the Burlington area specifically, uh, the, from the current conditions to what they're looking to raise their levy to, the protection that they have, would have about a point two to point three feet potential impact on a five-hundred-year flood. Uh, so, if you have a five-hundred-year flood, it would have about a, it, the river level here in Burlington downtown would be point two to point three feet higher than what it otherwise would be without doing any improvements. For us, the biggest potential impact, um, you, is really in comparison to what our flood wall is. Our flood wall has, uh, two point six feet of free board above the five-hundred-year flood, um, level. So, it doesn't get to, it's not the kind of an impact that it causes any potential concerns in and of itself. Um, and that's a, part of what the core is looking at, is what do they see for potent, are, are there major impacts on any other areas? Uh, but that is out there, and, uh, if you take a look, um, if there's any comments that people have on that, that you do have through November thirtieth to do it on from a city perspective, I don't see a reason to be putting a comment out there. But that's their, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion. Should we close?
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Speed's adjourned. Good night, everybody. Oh, good meeting, counselors.